So Sheila is telling me that we're ready. I apologize to anyone online for our late start. But we will go ahead and gavel a sin. Good morning, everyone. This is the April 10th Budget Workshop Meeting of the Town of Southern Shores. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, undebout, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much. So I guess I'm going to be turning this over to Cliff, our town manager, to get us started. Morning, sir.
Morning. Okay, so I'm trying not to go through death by PowerPoint, but I will do some of this. And the department heads, and we've all met and we've gone through the budget. We're not in a position to be able to recommend to you that this is what the budget is ahead of this workshop. So coming out of this workshop, there may be, hopefully, we'll get some direction and some other changes. So what I'm putting out here is kind of a draft of a manager's recommended. So we still have a ways to go. But I did want to start off by just showing you, 2012 was, now minus beach nourishment, 2012 was the last time we had a tax increase. It went from 14 cents to 16 cents, which was two cent tax increase. All the other increments you'll see are revenue neutral, which some go up, some go down. And then there was the beach nourishment. But just to give you an idea, I just chose some expenses, and you can see that those, these expenses in 2012 were 2.7 million, and today those same expenses are 5.1 million. So things like sanitation, recycling, employee costs, and the contracts for lemon branch, ocean rescue, legal, computer, all of that has gone up 85% since 2012. And so you can see it's a pretty big jump. Then there's, you know, I didn't add the, I didn't add the annual debt for the fire station. I didn't add the increase from about 600,000 to a million for streets and stormwater. So add those in, it would be even more. But I did want to share the revenue neutral rates, of course, will be publicizing, well, we are publicizing this, but this does not account for any appeals. And so these numbers aren't exact, but they're within, they're extremely close. So from where we are, 19.58 minus beach nourishment, we're going to 12.16. And that, that just tells you, that alone shows you how much of an increase that we've had. And one thing I'll say about that 74% townwide add property tax value increase, I've looked at some, and you all have too, some property values went up 50%, some went up almost 100%. So everyone's not going to have to see this, the same impact on their taxes. Some folks, even at revenue neutral, their taxes are going to go up. And then you can just see from, from on down, the four cents for beach nourishment's 2.48, the first MSD is 7.15, MSD goes from three cents to 1.74.
Is this the last year we're paying?
So. I think we've got this, so next budget year, we'll be looking at new rates maybe. Yeah, I mean, y'all can change these every year, but you kind of made the commitment that we'll stick with it until we pay off this debt. We've got one more year of debt, and so we'll, this time next year, we'll be talking about what to do about the beach nourishment tax rates.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I got lost when you said that you and Bonnie were saying the 12.16 does not include what?
Appeals and growth.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, I think the county accounts for about 5% for both, which is kind of what you consider, you may see less property tax because people will appeal and the values might go down, but it won't be significant.
Okay.
Appeals will affect the value, not tax rate. The tax rate does not show the load. The 2.8 does not reflect 5% for appeals. So when you, when you see the numbers, the numbers are going to be like 2.6 something. That's.
So it'll be.
Now you lost me again. 2.6 and 2.8, I don't see any of those numbers on this sheet.
Property value.
2025 property value, 2.8.
Oh, that 2.8, that's a very large number. Okay. So.
So when we come back.
When Bonnie says growth, what does she mean by that?
You, you can account for a growth in the tax base since the time the revow was done from what, every year you can account for growth.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because that would just be new developed properties or.
Yep, just new construction going on.
Remodeling all that.
Both commercial and residential.
This shows you the tax rate when I was just showing you, you know, when it changes, it's not always going up, it's changing because of revow. So it, there is a lot of fluctuation there, but you can see from 2012 to a possible, what a four cent tax increase would look like, that's, this is, it's flat except for those two years. Here's the, in the last three years, or counting this year, the last three years, the, what the ad valorem and occupancy taxes have done, I kind of, every year, focus on this because it makes up so much of the revenue of our budget. We depend on these two. And they stay pretty flat unless there's a tax increase. But you can see, it's not a big jump, but we're starting to see from a hive, 4.9 million just two years ago, two budgets ago, starting to fall some, the occupancy and land transfer, but very, you know, minimally. This is, this is kind of jumbled, but if you look at the, each one of those colors represents a year, and so these are all the revenues. Ad valorem taxes, occupancy and sales, and again, you can see, if you look at those two bars compared to the rest, it's, it's pretty significant, the amount, thankfully, of occupancy, sales and land transfer that we can depend on to, to balance our budget. And it hit just the pie chart of the exact same thing. This is the expenditures. This is, the bar graphs going across are from ocean rescue, which is the lowest, the streets and bridges, which is the largest expenditure. Lot of fluctuation here, and that green jump up is because it carried over from previous year capital projects. So, you know, that, if we'd have evened that out over the years, that it's the same money, but just all spent in one year. So you can see, we're growing. Each year it gets a little more.
Wouldn't it be correct to say that a lot of the green in the last column is, is the bridge?
The bridge, yes, ma'am.
Because that's.
1.6.
1.7. 1.7, okay.
And then here's the, here's what it looks like if you slice it up in a pie. Okay, so I wanted, now I'm jumping into some of the expenditures that we're talking about. You've seen this before, but this shows you, in the last four years, I guess, and, and some projects recently done prior to, you can see the street work that we've done. Each year, each color represents a different year of projects, and of course, the yellow in the first year doesn't account for all the patching that was done. And you can see, we've started to do more, we've started to touch more streets with the same amount of money as, as we move on. And so one of the things we wanted, if you look at this portion of Chickahaw, everything's just about completed there except for spend drift. And so we, we'd like in this current year, we've still got a million dollars to spend in this current fiscal year, we'd like to take on spend drift, wild pony and landfall loop to put that project out to bid. We'd like to do that this, you know, next month. Ideally, we'd have something in front of you if you all approve that. Now, there, this deviates from that plan, but it gets, it gets us a mile of pavement, at least, of a straight stretch, and then it clears that out, I mean, it takes care of that section. And Trinity would be next. I'm just, sorry. Let's see, and then next year, if we carry some of those funds, that project I just showed you wouldn't cost a million dollars, we could carry that over. And the street I hear the most is East Dogwood. When are you going to do East Dogwood? That would be a bigger project than just Mill and Fields, so we wanted to carry some of that, this year's money over to that. My lines didn't show up, but at the end of that green line going north to south, I guess on the map, it's east to west, but we'd take this up to the, nearby the Dick White Bridge? To the Dick White Bridge. And that would be a project for next year.
Cliff, I just want to make sure I have it straight. You want, you still got money in the budget this year?
Yeah, this is what.
For roads that you want to do, spend drift, wild pony and landfall.
Yes, sir.
And that's, was in this year's budget?
That would be.
Which ends June 30.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then you're talking about, next, you're talking about the money that would be appropriated if we stayed with the million, which we have, which you put in there.
Right.
For next year, right?
Right.
25, 26, that's when you would do East Dogwood?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And there's some stormwater projects.
Right.
We talked about Hickory and Wax Myrtle, and.
Yeah.
What I've shown here is, what's highlighted is the sections, the project that we're presently considering capture the runoff from these streets. And that's a project that we'd like to put in next year's budget. The, the brick grant, I just learned that we may be in jeopardy of that program going away, that it looks like that may be cut and going in, the brick money going from disaster mitigation to disaster recovery. So all that may just completely go away, but this, this was going to be a great opportunity if, if, if we saw it happen to address the stormwater at the north end of town on 13th C. Oaks, NC 12. And what made it so great to me was the, not only would it, you know, solve a problem we've had for a long time, it was funded 75% by the federal government and 25% by the state. So it's a big, big project, and, you know, for us, the town to match this would be, would be costly. But I'll, I'll stay tuned for this because, you know, here soon, we may not be talking about this anymore. All right, so where, where we're looking is only in the recent past that we have used fund balance to balance the budget. Right now, and again, this is preliminary numbers, I don't want folks thinking this is what is going to happen, but four cents would equal one, four new cents, one penny raises about $277,000, would get about, generate about 1.1 million dollars. And right now, with what we're looking at, that's what we would need minus any more cuts. So now, I don't know if we want to stop there because another big decision that we have to make, that we want, we'd like to get direction on is what we're going to do about staffing the fire department in year one. So I'll, I went through that faster than I thought I would, but if there's any questions up to that point, that's kind of where we are. But we do need to, we do need to spend some time talking about the staffing for the fire department.
I just have a couple, just.
Yes, ma'am.
Back to the revenue section, where you have unrestricted, sorry, where you have, in the revenue section, you have unrestricted and restricted intergovernmental funds. I don't understand what that is.
Bonnie will explain it a lot better than I will. The restricted and unrestricted, the difference is.
Never mind. I just, I just found it.
Good morning. On, on the revenues, the unrestricted and restricted is basically what it says. So if it's restricted, it means that we are limited on what we can spend it on, such as, you know, the Powell bill has to be on streets, the Dare County Tourism Bureau money, they have, that's for a sidewalk grant, that sort of thing. So those are restricted as to what they can be spent on. The rest of them can just go in the general fund and we can spend them as the council sees fit.
Is there any discussion about the Powell bill money going away?
Yeah, we have not heard that. I do have it in this year's budget. I have not heard that yet. We did get some from the North Carolina League of Municipalities, every year they do their calculations, and they're usually pretty spot on. And according to theirs, that came out in March, we're on track kind of where we were this year, so I kind of, you know, kept that same amount in the budget for the Powell bill. I mean, it's 150,000, I mean, it would not make or break the town, but it certainly does help with street projects.
Are there any other governmental programs that are being trimmed or slashed or whatever's happening to them going to impact our budget?
Not that we have been made aware of. As you know, we had to have the art money that we were awarded spent by December 31st of 2024, which we had already done that. We still have to report that every year until 2026. There was some talk about that, but of course, they said no, that that's, you know, people have already gotten that money, and if they haven't spent it yet, they had to spend it before December 31st, so that has to be returned. But we spent our 972,000 on revenue replacement.
Thanks.
Cliff, when you say spend drift to cul-de-sac, what, what do you actually mean by that?
Mean from the, and I had, from East Dogwood to, if you can see that, this section that we did was kind of really bad. We would go from East Dogwood to that, this section. And there, there are, there is a, this section is in really bad shape. The cul-de-sac, we wouldn't do the cul-de-sac until after some of that was developed, I think. We, I mean, we could go ahead and do it while, if, if, you know, if that makes more sense, but there's several lots down there that are going to be developed, and I don't know what it does to the road.
From the intersection to the cul, to just before, where there's no more houses?
Yes, ma'am.
Got it, okay.
Wild, and I think I told you the last time we went through some of this, Wild Pony, what is in one of the first four years, but we, we didn't do it because, either because of money or where we were at the time we were doing the project. So this would tick, this would tick off spend drifts low on the pavement condition index. So that, this would knock off some, some streets. I mean, it's not like we're doing a street that's, that need it.
And that includes some of the improvements we hope that will alleviate some of the stormwater issue on.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the idea, anyway.
Correct.
Where was spend drift on the paving plan? The year seven?
Maybe.
Was it all of it like that?
It was chunked up.
Okay. I'll look it up.
Because what we learned from year one was, we get more street work done without having to jump the crew around to different locations. So we, even though it wound up in year six or five or whatever, it kind of made it more appealing to the folks who would be bidding on the work.
Mobilization is easier.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I'd like to say, just kind of in summary, for those who's maybe watching, we'll look at this later on. One, Southern Shores has not had a tax increase with the exception of beach nourishment since 2012. Two, a large percentage of the budget comes from, in essence, occupancy tax and meals tax, and that is down, what, 3% to 5% or so this year?
Yeah, versus last year.
Versus last year. I mean, and it's kind of like, you know, regression to the mean over the last several years since COVID, okay?
And it's a year behind when we get the money.
Right. So in other words, and then if you think of just your regular expenses, and how much they've gone up for just general living, I think, you know, the town has exhibited good stewardship of finances. The other thing too, if you look at the tax rate for the other towns up and down the beach, we're pretty non-low, or the lowest, I think. And then we're pretty lean and mean in terms of the number of staff that we have in comparison to the other towns. So, you know, something's got to give someplace, and with the addition of possibly four firefighters, you know, more senior career level firefighters, because the number of volunteers are going down, that is going to be a significant part of the budget. So something's got to give someplace. So, I mean, for citizens of Southern Shores, I think you just have to look at this thing from a macro level standpoint. And if, I'm not mistaken, if anybody wants to add anything, I think if I was going to do a summary, that's kind of it.
Yeah.
And you said that, or maybe I misheard, but fund balance has been used to balance the town's budget for how many years going now? I mean, we haven't had, as Rob said.
We've used it on paper, we haven't actually gotten into it. Yeah, we've adopted it as a, as a balancing, like 350, 425. I think last year was our second year, right?
Right.
And then, but we didn't actually touch it because we didn't, we had unpaid positions and stuff like that.
Right. So that's exactly right. So on paper, when we have to adopt the budget by July 1, we have used fund balance for the past few years. We have not actually ended up having to do that because revenues came in higher, expenditures were kept lower, that sort of thing. Now, this year, we balanced the budget, I think the original amount was about 2.9, I'm going off of memory right now. It's now up to 4.4 because of budget amendments for work that was obligated by June 30, but was not completed. So we will be using fund balance this year, but we won't know until once the audit is done and all the expenditures and receivables and that sort of thing are booked as to how much.
So this would be the first.
Yes.
And the other thing that this council did was, we raised the floor of the.
Yes.
I guess what we would return, the emergency fund.
Correct.
From, I think it was previously at 1.
It was at 1.75, and then it went to 3.5.
And then now it's at 3.5.
Yes.
And when we say 3.5, we actually mean three and a half million. Just so everybody understands. That's what we're talking about.
We actually, at June 30, had 5.5. You subtract out the 3.5, we're not going to touch that left 2 million.
Right, so that's, and that's almost a year old, that number.
Correct.
And.
So.
And so what, what we don't know is what that number is today.
Yeah.
She's got a breakdown, it's close to 2 from the, in our packet.
If we use half a million to balance, then we're looking at 1.5.
Okay.
And it still includes the payment, bridges are allowed for.
Correct.
Right?
Yes, sir.
That's a huge expansion.
Exactly.
The bridge is allowed, so that's a huge expansion. And it's out of that, so we might have to use 3, 400 of the 2 million.
The only other suggestion I would say is, is for a packet like this and for taxpayers to compare some of the tax rates between the other towns and us, and show them.
It's on the Outer Banks Voice.
I was just going to say.
It was there last night.
I think I read it yesterday.
Yeah, it's all, it's all out there on.
And I.
Never mind, I didn't read it yet.
And I paid particular notice to it because I was like, are we the lowest? Are we the lowest? And I believe we are.
Yeah.
Nobody's adopted it yet, so.
But, no, I know, in terms of current rate.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Current rate. And so that means we've been the lowest for.
We've been historically lowest for decades.
Yeah.
Most of my adult life.
Okay. So we'll get back to this whole fund balance question as we go forward. So is everyone sat comfortable with moving on to fire department?
Yep.
Sure. Okay.
So what the, and I think it's important you hear from the fire chief on this and potentially Malin White, who kind of represents the volunteers. But we have the, so what's, what's been proposed is this arrangement, so what we're talking about is bring, right now, we, the town contracts with Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department, and the part of the salaries that are in that contract are for a chief, deputy chief, and assistant chief, and two part-time admin folks. So we're proposing to bring all of them on as municipal staff, which would impact the budget from salaries and benefits. I mean, excuse me, just from the benefits, salaries are already accounted for those. The question becomes, what type of schedule are we going to run? And from there, are we going to hire four captains or are we going to hire three captains? And I'll, if, Ed, if you're, if you want to come up and talk about the reasons for the four, that'd be great. Come on.
Good morning, Ed.
Morning, everybody. How are you? So I should start off by saying, you know, most of us, I've spoke to personally, everybody here, and we've had many meetings on this. And two of the council people, Mark Bertanek and Robert Nielsen, were at a meeting with the volunteers and heard their side of their perspective on things, and as well as some of the paid guys that I have that are still with me. You know, obviously, I'm the most upset about it happening, I think we all know that, but there's not much we can do. What we need to do is decide whether, what we're going to do going forward. I'm proposing the four captains, the three positions we have currently funded with the admin people, obviously. That alleviates the workload on the chiefs, because I can tell you, Deputy Chief Dudik left because of this on-call time. Jay Williams left because of the on-call time. Nobody wants to work 24 hours here. There is not one department here doing what I asked my people to do or what I'm doing. I've tried to push it, it's not working. It's not going to work. I know there's other departments right now looking at hiring another chief to take that, we're dealing with the same issues that I'm having, to try and alleviate all that workload. It may not seem like a lot, but you're pinned to your house and you cannot go anywhere. I don't know anybody here that wants to do that. That's my recommendation for keeping that third chief, plus there's additional workload that I'm willing to take on when we go to the town. Cliff and I have discussed that. As far as the four captains, and I think that the two councilmen that were attending the meeting can also speak to this, this new workforce that we have is, whether we want to admit it or not, they like their free time. And abusing them, overtime, mandating, is not going to work. That's going to create a revolving door. If we only hire three, it's going to recreate a revolving door. I can almost guarantee you that. If you do that, you're going to, the volunteers are going to go away, because there's no relationship going to be able to be established with each individual captain. If you don't have that cohesion that we have now, that you guys witnessed, that is going to be in the end. Now, I'm not going to guarantee, I've never guaranteed anyone here that the volunteer system is going to last tomorrow, 10 years, and I think even, even Ms. Shoreman would say the same thing. I've never made that guarantee because I cannot. But allowing this schedule will allow me to offer something that no one else here is offering. I think the chief's been trying to fill positions here for five years. If we offer the same thing to the same people in the same port, if we were the same ship, we're not going to get the talent we need to maintain what we're doing. If you hire three chiefs versus, or three captains versus four, here's what's going to happen. There is going to be overtime, there's no way to avoid that. There's going to be sick time, there's going to be training, there's going to be vacation, everybody gets vacation. So one of those three is going to be, the two that are left are going to have to work overtime. How long do you think it's going to be realized, before they realize like, hey, wait a minute, this is no better than where I came from? I'm, I'm working more than I was from where I came from. In my opinion, that's just not going to work, and it's going to put an end to the volunteer system faster. Having the four will enable us to give something that no one else is giving, and we will get the pick of the litter, we will get the talent to do it. I personally do not see any other way to try and move forward, unless you just want to hire 12, and then I would agree with the town manager, and I respectfully disagree. We've agreed, he's looking through things, his goggles, I'm looking through things with my goggles, right? But for me, there's no other way to go forward, unless you just want to hire 12 and be done with it, then I would agree 100%. We could just have three, two chiefs, and we're done, we're out of here, no problem. I don't know what that costs, I'm suggesting significantly amount more money, but I just, there's, for me, there's no other way to do it. And I don't know. And I don't know how you all feel about it. I'm willing to take any questions that you have. I've spoken to each of you in great length about this. You pretty much know my opinion on it. But I will tell you this, just going back to my history. I have never steered the town wrong. Think of where we would be if they did not listen to me about building the building and preparing for this day. Everybody said, oh, my God, the building is so expensive and this and that. And you can talk to community members that will tell you this. If we wouldn't have done what we did then, we would be paying double or more for the building and adding staff. We need to be forward-thinking and build something that's going to be great going forward, that we can offer people a great service like we have. Because I'm not going to drop my, my service level that I expect from my people because we're only hiring three guys. The service level is going to stay the same. Still going to do smoke detectors, the Wiltshire, all that kind of stuff. Our residents are worth it. That's how I feel about it. So if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to take it. I think Malin would like to say something after I'm done. But if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to take.
Go ahead. Just an observation. Mark and I spoke to a lot of the volunteer firefighters one evening at 7 o'clock in the evening, and it was a pretty packed house. And some of the younger firefighters who, you know, work in Chesapeake or Virginia Beach, they emphasized the whole notion of a work-life balance. And they were definitely an advocate of especially the 2472 kind of ship schedule. And that kind of came through loud and clear, you know, from the actual younger people who were there. So that's just an observation that one of the things I took away from that, and I don't know if Mark wants to add.
Yeah, they were all, they were adamant about it.
Yeah.
Not adamant, I mean, they were adamant about that. And they indicated that those municipalities, even though they're a lot larger than we are, the ones up in Virginia are going to 2472. And it is a work-life balance. Whether any of us older people are not like that, that's what's going on today in the people under 50.
I disagree. I mean, I know people under 50 that work 84 hours, all day. Work longer than most of y'all did in your careers.
Oh, you're a big exception. So anyway, with that said.
There's a lot of that chatter.
There's a lot of chatter out there, but.
It's not a laziness thing. It's a.
No, I don't know what it is, to be honest with you. Okay?
I can tell you.
None of us do. Okay. So, and it'd be interesting to hear, but these were experienced firefighters who were talking to us and the volunteers as well. The older volunteers were the same way. They said there is a work-life balance that's needed. We're in, we're in a issue, a situation here where we have to make sure we have good fire protection for the citizens of the town, who quite frankly, take it for granted.
Exactly.
Okay. And, and as they should, as they should. Okay? The citizens, as they should, they should take it for granted that the firemen are going to show up if there's an issue. And that's what we want them to do. So we also want to attract the good people who are going to stay with us and not be a revolving door. So I think that all that, I noticed the other day, they're looking for volunteers in Caleb Hill. Right on the bypass, big sign, volunteers needed, at the fire department there. And they have, I have no idea how they're organized down there. I know there are lots of people. But we hope that this would be the way that they can go. The one question I have for you is if we do, if we do four, are you, are you confident, you and Malin are confident that the volunteers will stay with us? Because this is a fully-staffed flowchart here, which, as Cliff rightfully did, put out there, this is what it would cost. This is what it'd have to do if the volunteers go away. If the volunteers go away, this is what we're going to have to have somehow, either three or four. It doesn't matter. Okay, to maintain our safety here.
I'll let Malin speak to it, then I'll catch up, because I think he wanted to give his viewpoint as a volunteer that's been with me for 12 years. So for those of you who don't know, Malin's retired from the Ranald Aquariums in North Carolina. So he's got some background with running volunteer and paid people. I'm sure he can tell you that for himself. But, Mal.
First of all, thank you all for being open to discussing this and, and trying to seek a solution here. We really appreciate that. And I'll just say, volunteering for a fire department is a lot different than volunteering for an aquarium. But I've had an opportunity to, to work with both groups. And, and my interest really is trying to save the town some money because I'm a resident in the town. And I think having a trained volunteer force is one of our best ways to do that. The all-volunteer efforts, we can't sustain that now. And I think that to answer the question, will four captains solve the problem? I think it's our best chance at solving the problem. And as was stated before, getting the right leadership in place, I think, is our best hope of preserving the volunteer force that would work under that leadership. And, and so, you know, I think there's talent out there. Getting them here is going to be our next challenge. But I think this is our best, our best go at it.
Well, I'll just throw in that I just came back from 10 days in Kentucky, and it was 10 days of tornadoes and flooding. And emergency crew, firefighters and policemen and EMS were on duty 24/7, and you were very happy that they were there. And people would not have survived unless people were there to pull them out of their homes. I, I think we're headed for more extreme weather events. And I felt like I've lived through them for the last few days. And I do think people in Southern Shores take the level of service for granted. But I think we need to maintain that level of service however best we can do it. And also, I talked to the chief yesterday, and aside from work ethics, and I'm glad people have work-life balance. That's healthier. But it's also, I understand, a recruitment tool that we can use because it's different than the shifts that are being offered otherwise locally. And we do want the best and we want to keep them. It's very expensive to train firefighters and time-consuming. And if we do the training, we want to keep them.
From your perspective, regardless of recruitment tool, what, what difference do the volunteer facing does four captains versus three?
Well, it's, if we have three, then as Ed pointed out, there's always going to be a deficit due to vacation, sick, and so forth. So you've got two people then trying to cover that the vacancy or whatever is happening at the time. The workload tends to get a little overwhelming. We've seen that now when we have not enough people to, to attend to the workload. And I think that would just continue, which leads to the turnover that we were talking about.
I would also say, and I, I speak to a lot of what I know. I, I know fire very well also. But here's how I think of this, and it's a liability thing for me. Back home, when I was working police as a career, if I'm working a 16-hour shift and something happens at the 15th hour and 30 minute, do you think I'm going to be more vulnerable at that point? Well, what was your decision-making process? What were you thinking? Did you fight with your wife? Did you, what were you doing after work versus 30 minutes after I get there? Of course, it's going to be different. I'm going to be fresh. I'm going to be ready to do things. If you have a firefighter working 48 hours, which I don't agree with the 48, 96, I already said that. At the 47th hour, do you think he's going to find the same level of service to our residents that I expect? Because I'm here to tell you, it's not going to happen. We're human. It doesn't happen that way. Even at the 23rd hour, they're not going to get the same level of service that I would expect on the first hour. That's just human nature. It's the way it is. If you want to leave your work and you have your kids, we're going to soccer at 7 o'clock, and something comes in at 6:30 and you have to do it, you're unhappy because you had plans and your wife's going to be upset, your kids are going to be upset. That is not going to just well for how it's going to work out in the town. I really, really believe we need to be forward-thinking here and build something that we are going to be able to maintain and provide the level of service that we are accustomed to. And I, I'm glad that the town takes the fire department for granted. I love that because they've come to expect that service. Most people probably think the fire department's paid. That's awesome. That's a level, that's a little chink in our armor saying, look, that's the level of service you provide. But without the volunteers, I cannot do it. And, you know, we stated why we're here already. I'm just reiterating my thought that this is absolutely the way we need to do this.
And, and do I remember correctly that we'd be able to have someone in the fire station every night?
There will be someone there every day.
And that's.
24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year.
Now.
No. We have people that sleep there. You know, I went over our rescue shifts and things like that. I was saying maybe two, three nights a week, someone's sleeping there. Those are guys covering the rescue shifts, which are the med unit, covering with the med unit.
It just, there would be somebody, regardless of scenario, three or four, there would be somebody sleeping there, correct?
That's right.
Chief.
Go ahead.
I have a number of technical questions, but.
Yeah. I don't know. My question is more for Cliff or more for Ed and Malin. But let me just. So if you do the four captains, with the, with the number of shifts that's in this little spreadsheet here, it says hour schedule 168. Is that, is that a full-time employee?
Breaks down to 42 hours. That's another reason why I want it. It breaks down to a 42-hour work week, which is more normal for the accepted generally 40-hour work week. They wouldn't hit an overtime rate until they hit 212 hours, which is going to cut overtime down. Now, obviously, the guy's not going to be happy. He has to work overtime. He's not getting paid overtime. He has to work longer hours. But that's part of you getting the shift. That's the selling point. Like, you're living a better life because you're getting a shift. You might have to take one for the team one time and, and work a couple more hours. That's, that's the way it works. You have to give to get. There's a pro and con to everything.
So just one more time. So an individual employee would not get paid for overtime?
Till they hit 212 hours.
In a month.
In a month. 28-day cycle.
In a 28-day cycle.
That's right.
Okay. And how often do you, do you have, maybe you don't know this. Do you think that happens often in the other towns that are nearby our town?
I don't want to speak on a term, but I'll say if you're, if you have, most of the, in fact, all of the other towns have 2448s, as far as I know with the Kelly Day. And I think the town manager could probably speak to this better than I could because he's, he's experienced with it in Ag's head. Now, they have a, a larger force, so they can drop down and not necessarily fill that or backfill that slot. But I would say the overtime, if you only, if you only had, if you just, like, I think in Ag's head, and correct me if I'm wrong, they have a four-man minimum on the engine, right? So they could drop back to a three, or a three-man minimum with four on the engine. So they could drop back to three, and if that guy leaves, they're not really backfilling that position. So it's not really costing anything technically if he leaves. Where if you're cut at this short, you're going to be backfilling all the time with overtime. And with the 2448, you're going to have a significant amount of overtime. And you're going to have the rollover. You're going to be training them. You're going to be outfitting them. PPE is about $5,000 per guy. So that's specially fit per member. Malin, obviously, I'm not going to fit in something Malin's wearing. That's bought specifically for the person. And same with the Class A uniform, the station uniforms, and the training. And I think Malin went over yesterday, it takes 20, I never counted this, but he did, 28 steps to set up the ladder truck, which may not seem very complicated to someone. You just put the ladder up. But that truck, if you set it up wrong, you can roll it over, you can touch power lines, you can kill people with that thing. You have to know what you're doing. It's not a simple task. And there's, I, I take it for granted because I've been doing it so long, setting this stuff up and doing this stuff. But I never thought of that. And it's probably the same with the engine. There's probably a certain amount of steps, you know, maybe 20. I don't know. I just take it for granted. But if you don't know these steps, that's tying up time, valuable time to attack and mitigate whatever we're dealing with.
Thank you.
The chiefs, the fire deputy, the chiefs of deputy chief and the assistant chief. Are they on a seven-day schedule, a five-day schedule?
They would be on a 40-hour work, five-day schedule, yep, with every third weekend being an on-call weekend.
Is there any way to just do it two?
Well, because the reason why I was suggesting three, and I, I know that there's a department right now, I don't want to say who it is, but they're working on the same thing I'm working on because they can't, the workload of the on-call time is what's killing people. I, I'm really upset that I lost Matt because I was planning on him rolling into my position, and I think he would have been great for it. But even, I think Malin would tell you, and if Deputy Chief Williams was here, they had many talks where, you know, both of Matt's sons are now out of the, out of the house, and his wife was sitting there till 11 o'clock at night all the time by herself. She's like, this is not going to work. We need to do something here. And I think that and the, the fact that he could be chief and, and duck, he got access to the pension fund. A lot of different benefits that I couldn't offer before he got. But I think the on-call time was what was killing him. And I think if we don't, I think we're just going to be rolling through, we've already rolled through three deputy chiefs already because nobody wants to do it. I, I feel like I'm trying to sell something or I'm hurting myself. I don't really get, like, most people are like, great, hire the 12 guys and I'm done. Then I don't have to come out like the other chiefs on the beach. I'm trying to maintain everything, and then while I'm doing that, I'm hurting myself. So I don't really feel like there's any benefit to me selling. I'm trying to do what's right, as I always have. And I was right on the building and I'm right here.
So help me understand the shift during the day.
Well, we loaded.
When all three, when all three chiefs, chief deputy and assistant are on duty.
Yep.
And we have a captain, and a call comes in.
I will work.
Can you run then without a volunteer?
I, I would.
I understand the system.
Yeah. Here's what I'm proposing. The reason why I load daylight like that is because we had two occasions last year, and that's why I brought it to your attention, where there was one guy in there. That can never happen, ever. And the reason why I load daylight is if no volunteers show up, we can still roll a truck with three guys and me, provided no one's on vacation. So I'd still be in some manner. We'd have our technically kind of scape in the, the thing there with the two in, two out. But we would have it. That's, that's why I did that. That's why I loaded daylight. These, the chiefs, obviously, you know, have a plan for the assistant chief, and I've spoke to the town manager about it as, as he's, we've discussed it many times. The deputy chief personnel, there's, there's many things to do that right now I'm currently having to do, so things are suffering. So that's why I'm proposing that and to load daylight because that's our time that we're short.
And just clarify for me, when you say, I can't quite understand what you're saying, something about daylight.
The daylight hours, so probably from maybe 8 o'clock till 4 is our hard time. Because people are working, going on and off shift.
Gotcha.
Have commitments, things like that.
And that, is that when you get the majority of your calls between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM?
Because when you look at that assessment, it's usually Monday from like 10 to 4, I think it was. I'm paraphrasing, of course, I'm summarizing because I don't have the report in front of me. But I thought it was kind of odd that it was Monday. I would have thought like Saturday or Sunday was our busiest time, but I've never really looked into it. I honestly don't care because I have to answer them all anyway, so. But yes, that is our busy time. And those three guys, unless somebody was on vacation or sick or something like that, there would be those, those, that personnel would be in the firehouse.
And that report data went back how many years? Three?
I think it went back three. I think it went back three.
Okay. So for us to look at it anymore, we'd have to have, spend time collecting data. Okay. Thanks.
There was one other issue that we discussed with the meeting with the actual firefighters. And it may seem like an ancillary issue, but it's an important issue because it really can deal with a lot of cost avoidance. And that is maintaining the organizational culture of the volunteer fire department. That is huge. And as Edgar Schein said, organizational culture is the way we do things around here. The key thing is whoever the captains are, whether they're three, four, whatever else, have to know that. Because if we do maintain and even if we possibly increase the number of volunteers, that will obviate the need for going to more of a career slash professional firefighting force. So who's ever hired, and you know, the hiring authorities, whether it be Ed and, and the town manager, that has to be emphasized because we want to maintain that. And I think it's just for a speed of core of the existing volunteers, whether they be older or younger. And then hopefully attract some people in and, and there's a benefit to the town simply because it's cost avoidance and going to the full 12.
Matt, you have some questions.
The, of a short-term and a long-term question. If, start with the short-term. If you, if we have four captains, you go out hiring, you hire one, they're not running on 2472 at that point, right? Then you hire two, they're still not running in 2472. It takes all four in place to operate that schedule, correct? So what would be the projected timeline of staffing up?
I mean, obviously, I'd want it as quick as I could get it. But I, it's hard for me to answer because, like Chief Cole, I'm going to be choosy because you need to ma, if you don't maintain that, what's the point?
So what would be the, the short-term, like if you could only hire two over the next 12 months, what kind of, what would that look like?
I would say they'd work their 2472 and you'd still be short that, those days. You know, I would not force them on overtime and things like that.
Immediately at 24.
Yeah, because I think we're not to where it was a crisis point yet, but I think we would have been there very quickly. So I think we can kind of work through it. And there's many details, you know, we've discussed that we'll need to work through over the next 12 months, including what that organization would look like. But I, I would not want to force, bring them in there and start buckling them down, force them to work overtime. That's going to be counterproductive, in my opinion.
No, I was also thinking of reusing it as recruitment, but they can't operate under that schedule. But I, I hear what you're saying now. No, I was also thinking of reusing it as recruitment, but they can't operate under that schedule. But I, I hear what you're saying now. So just want to add, if we had C2, C3, C4, so we got a guy coming in Sunday, come back on Thursday, come back on Monday, come back on Friday, it would still be that same shift schedule, just with one guy instead of four.
2472, we'd fill those four, I think, pretty fast.
You got good confidence on that?
Yes.
Okay. That's reassuring. But my long-term question is if we go to a professional department, are you laying one of them off?
No.
So you're going to have four shifts to operate, three shifts?
I would stay with that.
Uh, that's where I'd, I'm confused.
Be four. It, so what we're proposing right now.
So your captain wouldn't be linked to a specific shift team anymore. They're, they're floating through your shifting.
No, in, in the coming years, if you look at the, the bottom three rows there, those are the firefighters. So.
Yeah.
We would hire, what is it, 12? 12 firefighters, three for each one of those shifts. So there'd still be four shifts.
Okay.
There'd still be, I mean, we'd be 24.
But the other org chart has 12, has a nine firefighters.
Yeah, that's on.
As a professional.
Yeah.
Yeah, the professional staff departments. Because you said we were going to go right away. We would do 2448 with the full department.
I would, I would, I, what, what I should have said was I would agree with him at this point. I'm still for the 24, no matter what happens. Because I'm trying to, obviously advocate for my guys. And I, I understand the level that people are giving is not there anymore. Regardless of what anyone in this room thinks, it is not there. They don't want to do that. And these other departments are having the same troubles. They just can't adjust now. We're building it. Let's build it right from the beginning and not mess this up.
Your professional department would be four captains and four shifts, not three captains.
My, my, my career department would be four captains.
Yeah, you're professional now. I'll give you that. And I want to think, I mean, you've said it, but it sometimes does not say enough how much money you all have saved the town over the last 10 years.
Well, over 15, well, over 15 million.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's cognitive in my mind as we're thinking about how much money it may cost now. It's been a significant savings thus far operating the way you have. Uh, you've used my mind a little bit about the short-term. I'm still confused about the long-term. So we, because that's where the cost differential starts becoming
Sure.
painful. I mean, it's almost a million dollars at that point, um, between three captains and four captains.
And, and don't think I'm not mindful of that. I, we, Cliff and the town manager have spoken about that extensively. But I just feel like you're going to be into the same things, unless things really turn around, which I, I just don't see him getting that much, but changing that much at this point with people's opinion on how much they want to work. I think we need to offer them something that's, that's reasonable. And I think when you get that three shifts, if you only have three guys, you're going to be backfilling with overtime, and no one wants to do that. They do not want to stay there. I'm just being honest. I'm trying to, it's not going to affect me either way, right? Because I'm leaving at three. If we had 12 guys, I'm out of there. I'll come back if it's burning. It's not like now where I'm getting up at 3:00 in the morning. I'm still working 7:00. That's all over. So it's not hurting me to go that way. But it is going to hurt the personnel. And I'm trying to avoid what we have going on in public safety, which, you know, for the police side, I don't mean to drag the chief in, but me and him are good friends. I know the, the, the problems these had trying to bring talented people here with the, with our other challenges of housing and everything else. I just don't think it's right to abuse somebody like that. That's my personal opinion. When you start mandating overtime, I can tell you right now, my nephew is a city of Pittsburgh paramedic, mandated every single day he works in there. He goes in for 12, he's mandated 18. How long do you think he's going to last? He's already tired of it. Made $176,000 last year. Does not care. He can't use his boat. He can't go out with his wife at night. Nothing. It's work, sleep.
Yeah.
But you can't abuse somebody like that. They're not going to accept that anymore. That's not the way things are done. And that's what will happen. That's what's happening right now. And you all have talked, I'm sure you've done your homework. Everybody here is an intelligent person. I'm just trying to build something moving forward that will justify our level of service and where people will want to stay here. They're not going to want to leave here. Once they get here, they'll never leave. That's what I'm looking to do.
Okay.
The, uh, idea of the four was to keep the culture.
Yeah.
Hire for the culture, which will keep the volunteers so that we don't have to hire the other 12.
Exactly.
That, that, I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it. Uh, I know it's expensive. But that, that's what I'm doing is, and that's, that's the impression I got from the volunteers and listening to them that evening. That it, it, you know, we, we talked about this. We said, we don't know which way we're going, you know? And they were giving us their opinion. And, uh, there could be more volunteers then. I mean, it may not work. I mean, there's no guarantees.
That's right. I would never give you a guarantee.
I think, in listening to the volunteers for the first time that evening, uh, I was impressed with their dedication. Incredibly impressed with their dedication and what they've done for the town up to this point. And, and, and all the public service, uh, people who work for the town. I mean, so I, I just was, uh, that's why I, I'm in favor of that, of the four. Uh, so that we can put our best foot forward, not kick the can down the road. And, um, is it going to cost money? Yeah, it's going to, all of us who are residents, it's going to cost, it's going to cost every resident some money. And the taxes, but, uh, I think that's the way it's going. I, one question. Do the captains have to live in the town? Do they have to live on the outer banks? Or do they get to live 50 miles away like we'd have to do with, with, uh, the police department?
Unfortunately, I would love to make them live in town.
You what?
I, I would love to make them live in town.
Okay, I know we could.
But I don't think.
Live within, what, 25 miles?
Yeah, we'd have to make some agreement where they could live. Um, I, I just don't think with the way housing is, they can afford it.
If they're not coming back to work, they could live anywhere. That are ours.
Oh, they could, they could live in Chicago.
They could. But it, I'm being, I'm being somewhat.
I know you are.
If they're working 24 hours and not coming back, then it, it opens up the candidate.
The geographic.
They could work for another fire department.
I mean, you, Mike, I'm sorry.
They could work for another fire department.
I mean, they, they.
Oh, they all have.
2472, you would, you could drive on Virginia Beach. You'd drive in.
Yeah.
I mean, so the candidate.
Yeah. They wouldn't want to. But, yeah, I get it.
I think when you witnessed that, and the reason why, when we were sitting there, I did, I was like, who has been here with me since we started? And you saw the raised hands, like 10 or 12 guys, whatever it was, they're all, they don't have to be there. They're, for, for lack of a better word, they're already doing it for real, right? They're in Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, they're with the MS. They're there because, in my opinion, and I, you know, I'm somewhat insulated. I try and stay connected with them as much as I can, but they're there because they like being there, and they enjoy the culture. They want to help. They don't have to be there. They don't need the check. They don't need any more experience. They're already doing it. That's what I think we need to maintain. Can we? I certainly hope so because I didn't want to do this hurdle as it was. And I definitely don't want to add more. But I can't, I'm, I'm just not that dumb. I'm not going to give you a guarantee. I can't. I'm just not. I would never do that. Tell you something I haven't, that I'm absolutely certain I could do.
Well, I only hear what I want to hear, so.
So Chief, I'm, I'm assuming that under the three chief scenario, those chiefs would take on more duties for recruitment of volunteers and training with that.
Well, I will say this, and I, I think we do a fairly good job at it. But when you're getting pulled in 25 directions, you know, I said something yesterday, yeah, I'm an admin chief. And I don't know if it was to you, I was talking to someone I was talking to. I said, right until I'm not, I get interrupted with a fire call or rescue call. So by the time I get back to get my mind back into what I was actually doing, it's, you know, 20, 30 minutes. It interrupts everything. And I'm not saying that's, that's our job, right? But it'll be easier for someone to maintain and put a higher level of effort into whatever job, task they're doing versus being pulled in every direction all day long. You know, I come in, I have, and I'm sure this is the way everybody is. I come in and I have my day scheduled, and nothing happens that I thought was going to happen. So that's the way it happens. You know, that's the way it is. But I think if you had more people to spread the workload over, obviously, it would be done better.
The other notion we actually talked about too is having the four chiefs, one, uh, several of them would really be, um, I guess part of the hiring criteria would be to train the new volunteers.
That's 100% their job.
Yeah, so train the new volunteers. So, you know, training would go down if you hire fewer.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, that's the key thing because you have turnover of volunteers. The new ones have to be trained.
Do you have anything you want to add, or?
The only thing I, I just wanted to throw in there, we're talking about firefighting, but, uh, I've come to realize that having a volunteer force for the town, they do so many things. And in the past, we've assisted the police department with searches, uh, young children missing, uh, elderly dementia patients. Uh, we have a, we have a workforce with radios. We can be deployed quickly. And, and, uh, we've, we've cleared roads for emergency vehicles during hurricanes. We, we just do a lot of things other than fighting fires. So, it's a great resource for the town. And I just say that as, uh, as a town resident that, uh, you know, don't want to lose that.
No, yeah. I think that the second part of the conversation I don't want to get bogged down with today is the, the future of that volunteer organization, what structure it takes. That's, that's, I mean, we're actually requiring them for, to deliver the service we need. So that's, that's one thing about our town staffing. What's other, how, how are we going to continue to nurture that? We don't need to go there today.
Council, does anybody have any other fire department-related questions for Chief Lindbacher or Malin? Thank you, gentlemen. Very much.
Thank you much.
So Cliff, you want to still talk about the fire department, I think?
Cliff, last. Not, a lot less than I wanted to before. Um, so just, just to go back to clarify, under this today, if we were to hire this today, it, it, it's 962,000 in the budget. We would have, and tell me if I'm wrong, we'd have the chief, deputy chief, assistant chief, and a captain from 8:00 to 5:00, 8:00 to 4:00. And then we'd have a, the captain would be there, uh, 24/7. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
365.
Right.
Well, the, the chief positions are not working on weekends. Is that correct?
Right, Monday through Friday, yeah.
They're only, yeah.
So.
Right.
The, the more traditional, um, and let me go back. The, uh, the 160, under that scenario, they're working 168 hours. Uh, you asked about, these guys would work 160, the chiefs would work 160. The captains and firefighters would work 168. And so this is what a more typical you'd see, and this, what would set us apart is what the chief has shared with you. Other departments, this is what you would see under this scenario. From day one, you'd have the chief, deputy chief, and three captains. So you'd only have three on from 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. The, the cost difference, you know, the grants came to things, it is what it is. Depending, it's 962 to 852 or 711, depending on if you hire the deputy. In this case, they're working 200, well, one shift's working 240 hours a week. I mean, 28 days, the other two are working 216, like the chief said. They get overtime at 212. If, so you got to work the Kelly Day, which gets really complicated and a scheduling nightmare, but that, that's a built-in day off to try and get time down. And you, you're going to have, you're going to have firefighters, the, the time off, sick. All that would reduce this. But in this scenario, there would be overtime. In the other scenario, it would be very difficult to justify overtime. So that.
So this scenario pretty much, it has got overtime built in.
It's, you're going to have overtime in this scenario.
The 2448.
The 2448.
Yeah, it looked like 36 hours a month.
But that's only if every firefighter works their full shift. That mean, you know.
They don't do that?
They take time off, they take sickly, they have to physically work the 212 hours to get overtime. If they take a shift off, that 240, you know, drops down 24 hours, it drops down to 216. I mean, yeah, 216.
There's no overtime in either one of these numbers?
Correct. That's correct.
All right.
Yeah, so that was my next question is, you haven't tried to calculate,
Right.
you haven't tried to calculate
Yeah.
what the real cost would be.
Yeah, that was.
Because overtime is, is this, we just don't know exactly what it would be.
Right.
Other than trying to ask other departments that.
Was the general hourly rate break down about 25, 28, something like that?
If, if we've got.
They're paying 40 bucks an hour, overtime 36 hours a week, how many a month?
That's, I think it's roughly. I mean, we've got, we've got a captain at 110,000 with salaries and benefits.
Can I just go ahead and ask for a five-minute recess? We've just lost one of our council members. And he's racing me to the, can, can we just take five minutes?
Thank you.
We'll be right back. He's racing here. I'm going to race in to the back of the.
That's George.
First of all, I think there's also.
Thank you for that short break. Sorry for anyone watching at home. We will jump back in. I think Cliff has the floor.
I, just to wrap this up, the, the way I'm looking at this is, if today you told me to go out and form a full, fully paid professional fire department, it would look like this. And so this is where I think we should end up. When we're fully staffed, this is where we should end up. So from my standpoint, this is where we should start, is, is we are going to start to end here. If, if we start with this, then I think, I just think 2472 is great. I think we'll have, we could hire guys who are going to be, will, will be set apart, will be, will be, the work schedule would be different in favor of the employee than it is at any other department, at least in Dare County. So it would, I mean, as you can see, you'd go from working seven shifts in a, oh, excuse me, you'd go from working 10 or nine shifts in a 28-hour, 28-day schedule to seven. You'd go from working one day and having two off, to working one day and having three off. So from the employee's standpoint, from a hiring standpoint, this is great, but it does cost, it does come at a cost considerable. So, you know.
Yeah, and I, I hear you, and I guess I would say, you know, these kinds of decisions, I think, are not 100% dependent on what's the bottom line in terms of the cost. I do think there are other costs that don't have dollar figures associated with them, and I think that's what Ed and Malin have done a terrific job of, of, you know, describing for us. Now, to the average resident, what do they care about? Probably just what's showing up on their tax bill. But maybe not. I mean, our town is so different. We have so many people in our town that are involved with the fire department, or know people that are involved with the fire department. And we have so many people that are volunteers, that do everything from, you know, pick up trash on the beach to take meals to people. I mean, you know, we are literally a town of volunteers, and we pride ourselves on that. So, uh-oh. That being said.
You're planning that.
Nice question.
Well, now we're making this.
Clearly choosing, choosing the option that, that Chief Lindbacher is recommending is going to set us apart from all other fire departments in Dare County. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is it also going to, is there any, is there going to be any downside to the rest of the town employees? I mean, what, what, what's it going to do to the town employee culture?
Oh, every employee has it better than the other employee. And so this, like I said, the, the full-time 8:30 to 5:00 staff, they work 160 hours. Policemen, they work 168 hours. The, the firefighters are on call that 24 hours. The, the rub is going to be that they're getting paid when they're not responding, the off-hours, if you will, but like I said, if the call comes in at 2 o'clock in the morning, they're going to it. If not, they're sleeping. That's, I mean, just being honest, that's, that's where the rub will come in. I mean, Chief, Chief may, I mean, his guys are going to, they may jump ship and go to the fire department because it's such a great.
That's all my question.
It, it is, it's just such a great schedule that.
Do you have comments to that, Chief?
Well, yeah.
Huh?
I can tell you that my guys are going to do this, and I do so. But at the same time, I respect that these people have been free for the last 20 years. It is what it is. I mean, but I get what the chief is doing, too. I want the same thing. I could have had my slots for a long time, but I don't want that. I want good employees that work with the other employees.
It's about that culture, right, Chief? I mean, that's what you're, that's what you're so concerned about, and that's, that's pretty much what drives, you know, recruitment and retention is.
But yeah, I'll be honest. I'm, I'm more ready to do that. So, as far as the shift.
So we're going to have a budget proposal next year for 2472 for the police department?
I don't know if I can make that up.
I think that there's a distinction in my mind, because we were attempting to do something with a hybrid department, with volunteers providing a level of service that traditionally a paid person would do. And the retention side of recruitment intention may be more important than the actual recruitment, the retention of quality people to service or volunteers. And that's, that's where I sort of warmed the idea of four captains. I'm still struggling with three chiefs that don't understand that part well enough, Ed. But I also agree with Cliff that a full-time department should look more like a traditional structure. So that's, that's really where I'm falling, not to lay it all out and more poker hands.
Maybe I can put your mind at ease here a little bit with the third chief. I didn't want to say anything because I don't want to talk on a turn, but Cliff and I have discussed, as well as Kevin and I have discussed, about taking the fire inspections off of him and kind of ease his workload a little bit with what he has to do. So it's not like it's just another third chief chilling out at the fire department. That's not what it's going to be.
Big boss, right?
Right, he's going to be, in addition to doing fire inspections, he's going to have to do, keep up pre-plans and things like that, because you're in there anyway doing your inspection. Oh, wait a minute, you have a new manager? Hold on a second, what's their contact information? Because all that's important at 3:00 in the morning when I'm standing out front thinking, I might have to break this door down because this number's old and I can't get a hold of the manager. So that, it's not like it's just an extra body. There's extra workload coming to me, and it's coming off the town staff.
Yeah.
The same that would be adding the two admin staff. I'm sure that, you know, there'll be adjustments that we all have to make, right? It's a learning process. There'll be different paths and different workloads that everybody's going to have to accept. That's what it's going to have to be.
And one of the main reasons for your desire for three chiefs is so you could roll out in the engine with a four-man team.
That's right. That's the most important thing, is making sure when you call for help, I'm not going to tell you I can do it and not do it.
Oh, yeah.
That's not going to happen under me. I have to be able to do it. And believe me, I did not want to do this. I think we all know how upset I was about it, but this is where we're at. There's nothing I can do about it. I don't know if that helps or not, but I was just trying to.
It does, I'm still, yeah. It's trying to be a steward of the taxpayer dollar and still do, I mean, it's, it's a tough thing to.
If we were.
I've been doing, we have $2.8 billion in property value. Fire service is critical. I mean, this is just, it's a no-brainer. That part should be stifled. I mean, just stipulated, like whether it's professional volunteer, whatever, commitment to fire services is our goal, as a council. We've got a couple of different proposals. We got the, there was one thing that Greg Grayson wrote in his report, was potentially adjusting salary rates to accommodate for lower hours' work. I don't think that's good for recruitment, but I don't even know if you've looked at that.
Well, I think.
I, I see, I hear you.
The, the, it's difficult, you know, to discuss whether or not we're doing the assistant chief, because we're paying, we're already paying for that. So that assistant chief position's on the table, and so we'd be talking about taking it off. If the idea is to have four during the heavy hours, it might make more, I mean, if we're going to hire somebody 8:30 to 5:00, it may make more sense that that person is a firefighter. That, I think that's the one place where I share what you're saying, is that if, if with four captains, we, we could do it with the chief and a deputy chief. The assistant chief is, is top-heavy. I mean, that is, that's top-heavy. And if the goal is to stay volunteer as long as we possibly can, then that's top-heavy for a long time. But that, you know, that, it's my, I think it's just, I see my role as making sure you've got, you're not surprised, you make the decision to go 2472, that you're not surprised later that Cliff, you didn't tell us that it's going to, you know, in the long run, it's going to cost $600,000 more than it. But it's, that's my job.
Okay.
That's what's it.
I would say this, it is, if you look at it like this, in the terms of chief, right, it, it probably top-heavy. However, if you look at someone like KDH, they have a specific person that does exactly what I'm telling you. He does all the fire inspections, he does, that, John Rosaldi knows literally every, you could call him on the phone at 3:00 in the morning and say, hey, this, this button's stuck on this alarm in this building, and he'll tell you what exactly what's wrong. That's kind of this guy's job. He's taking that job. So while I would say, if you, if you say chief, okay, maybe it's kind of heavy, I'm giving him that ability so that when I'm not there, we can spread the load out for the, lack of a better word, someone's, someone, one of my three guys is always in charge. So if something happens and I want to know what happened, I got to call one of the two people. Why did that happen and what happened? And I'll know. And I'm not saying I don't trust, I think I've all told you, it's not saying that I don't trust these, these, these guys, but I take their safety, I'm sure every chief does. But these guys, a lot of them, I could call my kids, and I, I'm very, very cautious on approaching these fire scenes. And I, I think I've told you all about the Dogwood Fire. You, you just have to really think and evaluate risk versus reward. When you look at some of these houses we've saved, and they were absolutely phenomenal saves, and they tore them down anyway. I'm not sure a 25 or 30-year-old's evaluating that the same way that I would be. I like someone, no, no offense to anybody here with some gray hair, because they've experienced a lot of things, and I tell everyone all the time, I had the cape, didn't work right when I needed it. It failed. You don't have a cape, and heroes don't short-lived. So that's why I want to do this, to have that level of commitment and make sure that our people are safe. And I'm not disrespecting any other way that people run things, just my take on things.
Yeah. So what's front-loading a lot of this discussion, obviously, is our fiscal year start and your budget proposal. If, I'm still on the fence a little bit, but if we, I'm just going to throw this out there, if we proceeded with a higher number, when we go out to hire July 1st, there's still, I mean, we adopt our budget by department, so this structure could be in flux at some point, still.
I'd caution, if you hire under the 2472.
No, I know, I know that, but when we go out, like, right now, let's say we give Cliff instruction, yeah, budget million bucks for fire cost increases, but as we go forward to actually getting a little bit more potentially feedback and things like that, if we, how locked in would this structure be? I mean, we're just adopting a number for a department, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah. I think we'd be, I think if we start out with the 2472, we're locked into it.
Yeah, I'm really still, at this point, I'm talking chiefs, like if.
Oh, I, well, you know, again, if the idea is to have four people during the heavy hours, you're doing it with three.
I can see.
Positions and a captain, you could do it with less. That, that assistant chief.
It was not shown here, and I'm estimating off the top of my head, that it's about 160,000 for chief.
And would we, that assistant would be about 141 with benefits.
141s, it's about half a penny. All right.
And for half a position.
Yeah, we've got that in the package, that's 962. I'm assuming that's including.
That's not included in the budget that he has presented.
No, I'm aware of that, but this, this little breakdown, it doesn't say, because the next page, I get a breakdown if we didn't have the assistant chief.
It's 110,000 and.
Plus benefits.
With a fourth captain, plus the assistant chief, and that, those two positions are not in the current budget that you have in front of you.
No, but they're part of the overall four cents potential increase.
No, they're not.
That, that would, that would be an increase.
So the additional three cents?
Uh, no, it would be.
Four cents. A little more than four.
No, it would be, it would be.
200.
251.
So it'd be about a penny, a little less than a penny more.
Now you got me really confused.
Well, the same.
962.
It, that's, that's if you fund, it's 962 in year one, if you fund what's in front of you right now.
And this is not included in a potential four cent.
What's not in, what's not in the four cent taxing increase is the assistant chief and the extra captain. So that, this would go from 962 plus 270.
So you're, you're, in your budget, you've got three captains and one chief.
It's another penny.
Right, it's another penny.
It's another penny.
Don't tell me that.
Above what you put in your, above the four.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, we, there's other things on the table we could talk about to keep it at four or.
We'll let you do that.
Okay, I feel like we're kind of.
Yeah, I agree, Mary.
I think, I think we're circling a little bit, so why don't we move to the next thing?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would, you know, I tell, I tell people, my opinion is my opinion until the three of you tell me what my opinion is. And so what I'm hearing is, in the budget, because I don't want this to be a, you know, a sticking point in the adoption of the budget, but what I hear is, we're going to, I'm going to include four captains, chief, deputy chief, and assistant chief.
Yeah.
As well as two part-time.
Actually, I'm, 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 I always like to do the compromise thing.
Yeah, that's.
The hybrid thing. I'm on board with the four captains. Didn't think I would be when I walked in here today, but I am. I've been convinced. I'm not on board with three chiefs. I'm still struggling with that. So is there an option to do four caps, four captains and two chiefs?
Yes.
With the 2472?
Yeah, you just, you just won't have four during the heavy hours.
Correct.
Yeah, and some of the other things that.
No, I get it, and I've already gotten Ed back out of his seat again.
Well, you would, the.
Just by saying that.
He would be covering every other weekend instead of every third weekend.
I want to be clear here, you need to take consideration my quality of life that I've given up for 12 years. I think that's extremely important. I, we need to fix that. I need to be clear here.
Understood. Thank you.
Next, all right.
Can we go back?
Yes.
To the yellow highlighted page? Just one page, sorry.
Right here?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Were you going to talk about this?
Well, yes, next, I think there's, there's some retained earnings in, within the fire department that I think, when we take over some of the assets, I think we should use some of that to pay off the debt of some of those assets. The, the, what's, what's in the budget is, there's a utility truck, I think there's about $110,000 left on a 6% interest. I think we should pay that off with, with those funds. There's a loan for some air packs, I, I think we should pay that off. There's a ladder truck that, the, if we were to refinance that ladder, the ladder trucks presently financed at about 2.48% interest, and it's, it's, the loan is to the fire department. If we were to refinance, they're not going to let us take that loan over, they're going to make us refinance it. So we, we would almost double the interest rate, which, you know, we're going to have to do, we're going to have to do anyway, so I don't think we should pay that off at a double. I mean, I, it's about $110,000 a year for the debt payment on that, I think. I think we ought to just keep paying that in the budget. Otherwise, we're, we're making a pretty, there's not enough fund balance in the fire department to cover the, that loan, I guess is what I'm trying to say, yeah.
So you're saying refinance the ladder truck at a higher rate?
Yes.
With a six-year payoff?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just, how much money is left on that ladder truck?
About $50, $50.
There's the option to pay it off, but that's, that's a lot of fund balance.
These are options that are not in the budget you, you have here.
Right, what, what I have in the budget is.
It's not in this budget here.
What I have in there is the, keeping the debt service at a higher interest rate, paying off the utility truck, paying off the.
That's in here.
That's in there.
Ed, the future capital improvements for y'all, like Greg was talking about replacing one of the ladder, or one of the engines in the next year or so, that, if, if you stayed volunteer, our current funding levels, you would have operated with that, or would you have come back for?
No, we are, in the hope of engines, it's around $800,000 now. I was hoping just to take the pain of the ladder truck and apply to the national, same amount. I would hope, if not, we cover, I would hope 95%.
Okay. I was just thinking any other big, because he, he did suggest a physical improvements, I mean, not capital improvements to the, to our vehicles, structure and whatnot for the next couple of years. That's not a small number either. But I see what you're saying. Thank you, Ed.
So what, what I've got here is if, if you're, if you wanted to see where we would, you know, potential cuts that would save money, and I'm not suggesting we do this, I'm certainly not suggesting that we do away with the lemon branch program, but these are some of the, these are some of the costs we could eliminate with the, with the penny. You see that 116, we could pay that off. We could use fund balance, you know, at, at, one, one penny of fund balance, we're still over, well over a million dollars in fund balance. We could use fund balance, you know, at, at, uh, one, one penny of fund balance, we're still over a, well over a million dollars in fund balance. So there's some options we have to reduce the level of taxes. But it would, it would require a reduction in service if we did that.
Do we have any idea what the recycling per household fee would be if, if we have individuals that would still like to recycle, even though the town's not going to offer that service? Town may not offer that service. What the subscription price would be for?
I think it's about 10 or 12 bucks a month.
10 or 12 bucks a month?
It's not.
And that's something that NAGSAD currently does, correct?
NAGSAD, Kitty Hawk.
Kitty Hawk as well, okay.
I, well, I think we're the only ones that incorporated
That have it in the budget.
Yeah. And that, that cost to collection is 252, but we know there's a certain amount, if we didn't do that, a certain amount of tip and fees that are going to go in the trash that we'll have to account for. So that's why it's at 205.
Do we, do we have any idea for Kitty Hawk and NAGSAD, the percentage of people that went to subscription service?
We can find that out.
Okay.
Pretty, but no.
Okay. All right. Can we go back to that other page now?
Yellow one.
With the yellow highlight?
This
There we go. Um. So it's the yellow highlight says the unrestricted fund balance, this is for the fire department.
That was as of June 30th, but I, I don't believe that's the number to that.
This was a, this was a June.
This from audit. This is just, again, it's just like our fund balance, as of June 30, 2024, that's what it was.
But it, but it went from 2023 to 2024, it went down almost 200,000. I was just wondering why. Because they get all of their, they get, the fire department has always gotten their expenses from the town. I mean, you know, so why did it, so what, that seems like a big jump from over one fiscal year in a fund balance.
That may be a question we have to come back to you with.
Okay. Okay. And then I didn't understand interest expenses that, I mean, we pay the, we, the towns, that, that's the debt service that they have is interest expenses, I assume.
That's a debt principal interest, a 583. Do you want to walk us through these line items? Is it who, did you put it together?
Yeah, uh
This is from the fire department's audit.
So the interest expense is probably their other equipment interest, right? Like fire, uh, the fire truck and
Ladder truck.
Um, the, the air packs and whatnot, and then the depreciation, depreciation, debt principal interest.
Yeah, I just was, I just was curious about the interest expenses. I just assumed that was interest on the the building, the ladder truck and the
I think it's all but the building, right?
It's all but the building?
Yeah. Yeah.
It just
Because they carry, they carried out of their internal budgeting, their equipment interest, right, Ed? And then we kind of paid directly or for the, for the loan payment. So that's why they're kind of separated out and that's why it's a negative in parentheses for the debt principal because it's sort of, it's almost an asset from us, but.
I, I think the most accurate number right now, this was last week Beth prepared as my admin person, is 953457. But that is including the next two and a half months of operating costs also. That's all the money we have, less the relief fund.
Yeah, yeah, and so that, that would make sense because it reflects on the salary saving.
I mean, this is fund balance, what we would call
He's talking cash balance, right?
I'm talking cash money, what we have.
That's still operating stuff, so that, that's to make one. I mean, this is strictly fund balance.
Well, it still doesn't answer the question, what happened from eight, what happened from 23 of, from June of 23 to June of 24? That difference, I guess, so that's a question. And then, um, we, we, I, I think, like the chief said, some people think we've been, we have a professional fire, you know, a all paid fire department, which we don't. We have three chiefs and two admins, part time. So it's really one admin. So, but we haven't been paying a third chief since August the first. There's a, a third chief. Okay.
In addition to Jay.
And you started that when?
When was Matt left, maybe a month after Matt left?
August.
So we have been paying for three chief positions basically since
We weren't in December, though, when we met.
You weren't in December.
When did, I can't remember when I'm chief.
It was November and
It was probably a month after that.
Okay.
I, I had, I combined out what I did, but I'll have it in a moment.
Okay.
But there's three on salary now, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, okay, thanks. All right, um, there's, I'm done with the yellow marked piece of paper.
Find out the delta and those fund balances.
Yeah, yep. Okay.
So I, I, the only other, I don't know if I can get this direction today or not, but is, is based on what you've seen so far, the, uh, you know, we, we're looking at around five cents, I think.
That seems like a very big number.
We left everything in here right now.
Yeah.
Seems like a very big number to do in one year. And, and you're, you're not using any fund balance.
That's one of the cost reductions potentially, but yeah.
And and why is that?
I, fund balance is getting lower each year because, um, you know, we've taken fund balance out to do certain projects. Um, I'd still like the ability to, when things come up, to be able to do that. But going back, going back to one of the first couple of slides, it's, at some point, the, uh, cost of doing business should, you know, catches up to you if you're not generating the funds to do that business. And, um, I think, I just think it's time that we, we've been very fortunate not to have a tax increase. Five cents is a lot. I don't know that I'd recommend that much to try and find maybe a penny somewhere, but, um, I think that, I, I just think it's unsafe to keep using fund balance to balance the budget.
Yeah, I could see using fund balance for a penny, but I can't really see going to two pennies with fund balance.
I couldn't see using it as a penny on paper like we have potentially.
Right, because usually you use fund balance for capital needs, not to balance the budget.
Yes, it's a bad habit.
Usually.
But not so much for the town of Southern Shore's the last two budget cycles. Okay.
We've been able to use it to force all the tax increase, so.
This, this is an unusual year. I would say at least, that's an understatement. Except for beach nourishment, costs have gone up 85% since the last time we had a increase, is that what we're reading here?
And if that's just for those things, that didn't include
Besides the reval, you know
Well, yeah, that didn't include
Costs have gone up and the city has been able to manage that with sparingly, and this is the first or second year we've had to use some fund balance. I would say we've been pretty appropriate. The city has passed councils and current council in managing that balance. I mean, not everybody might not agree, but we do have a situation here with the fire department that was coming, we just didn't know when.
Correct.
It just happens to come this year. I, I'm with you, Mayor, I, I think a penny out of, on paper would be reasonable. Four cents is still a lot.
Four cents is still a lot.
Okay, it, it's still a lot, but we have a situation here that is not, you know, we, everybody said for years and years, I've heard, since I've lived here, we ought to have somebody who's an information officer. You've cut a half a year in there of one. Okay, I heard chipping is untouchable. I've heard, I first read, the recycle is untouchable. Okay, I mean, I've heard that, I've heard the stories, I don't know whether it is or not. But I think we have an, an unusual year here that we have to, to look at real carefully, but I think we use a penny out of the thing, we stay with the four cents. We fund the, you know, we go with what we're suggesting here. I just think that it's a year that we can be in, being responsible, that's my opinion. I still think we're being responsible here, taking care of what the town needs and what the basic needs of the town are, is to collect the trash, have the police, have the fire. And what was the fourth one? Uh, good streets. And, and we've been on those projects, so, uh, that's, that's my viewpoint.
I mean, I kind of look at it, if you're going to do it, do it, you know, all in one fell swoop, because otherwise you're going to have to come back and ask for more, you know, in the subsequent years. And, you know, uh, you know, just kind of take your medicine now in terms of a tax increase of a five cents. And, uh, I think, yes, the town has been good stewards with money all the time and, uh, you know, as Mark said, between present council and previous councils. And, uh, yeah, we got, we have the fire department, uh, thrown in now and we're not putting anything out there that's extravagant. We're getting back to basics of what town government is supposed to do. And this is just costing more money and
And it is painful, but I just would reiterate, we've had a low tax rate largely due to the volunteer fire department.
Yep.
Yep.
I just
Well, and fund balance.
Yeah, fun, well, I mean, we've had, we've saved almost 2 million dollars a year.
Plus you, plus you, plus you've increased the restricted fund balance.
Yeah.
You don't want to touch.
Correct.
Actually, that's been done, we did that. I just, it's uncomfortable, we're all going to pay, all the residents are going to pay.
I did some very brief math just for fun. I'll, I'll pay $40 a month more at five cents.
You'll pay 40 what?
$40 a month more at five cents.
Personally.
For my house, yeah. So I mean, I know that I'm okay summing it. I'm, I, I hate to, I hate to raise taxes on my fellow citizens, but we also got to get fire trucks to their houses.
Yep.
Well, and I've lived in some counties before that raised taxes and cut services. That's when you really feel, you really feel the, the anger then, that you're paying more and getting less. So even though I can look at these expenditures and see a couple that I think we could certainly cut, I don't know how our citizens, you know, our residents and property owners would feel about that.
They can be cut next year too, if there is a lot of pushback.
Yeah, I, I would hope that our res, our fellow residents would let us know what they think, um, between now and May 6th, when we have the budget presented to us by the town manager. But I did think it was important for us to have this discussion because, you know, taxes and services, that's what we're talking about. So if you want to pay less taxes, then you're talking about getting less services. So which ones do you want to give up? So let us know. And maybe it's none. But we, without y'all telling us what you think, we don't know. So.
Well, and I, I will just throw in that for the oceanfront people, because we always say, well, there haven't been any tax increases except for beach nourishment. But for those of us who got the full impact of that, that, that's been a little bit of a hit.
About 15 cents.
Yeah.
It's not a small amount.
It's about
Which is more than $40 a month.
Which is more than $40 a month.
They had the biggest, I mean, I would double in some cases.
Although, I will say, we certainly have a beautiful beach and it's, I think, well worth what we've done.
And a protected shoreline for those of you.
And a protected shoreline, yes.
Yes.
I got in trouble before, but it's public money protecting private property, so. Reiterate it again. So we're all willing to share.
Um, so do we need to? I guess we need to tell the town manager what he needs to, what he's best off presenting us in May in terms of the fire department.
Yeah, because I'm, might be biggest problem, I'm still on the fence about chiefs, but I'm willing to go with the consensus of the rest of the board. If you want to instruct manager to, to take the whole kick and kaboodle I'm going for, if you want to make cuts, I'm going for it too. I think there's been a lot of good effort and work put on every party. With the fire department, the budget, buying, thank you, I mean, every, you guys have done, this is a big thing for us. We've been talking about tax increases since the first year I was elected. COVID stopped. Thankfully, we cut then, we didn't do any road improvements for almost 18 months. And, and I've thought we've had to raise taxes every year, this is the biggest single chunk, but we got, we got to move forward in a positive manner. That's my feeling.
I'm, I'm in favor of the four chiefs and, and all the deputy chiefs.
Four chiefs?
Four captains.
Four captains, I'm sorry, I get confused.
Uh, I'm in favor of four chiefs, uh, four captains, four captains and 2472. And that's the higher budget number, but that would be presented within the budget.
While we're just on this, I just want to make sure, you know, like you said, some people may not even know we're, uh, a volunteer department. They may not know we cover, uh, Martin's
Martin's Point.
Yeah, so, so the volunteer fire department is in contract with Dare County to provide Martin's Point Fire, that Martin's Point pays for that. They, they, um, so it's revenue coming forward, but I'm assuming, you know, we're going to take that over as well. At least that's my assumption moving forward.
Can we negotiate a new contract with them? The county?
That would be Martin, Martin Point, whoever it is.
Yeah, I mean, what, what my thought has been is that whatever percentage of, and there's no number, there's no set number. But if, if it's been around 10% that whatever the cost of the increase is would equal 10%.
Because the reality is that our friends in Martin's Point, which our chief is one of, um, have also reaped the benefits of the volunteer fire department for all these years. So even though they're not within the boundaries of the town, they have been able to take advantage of those same benefits. So it does, it does seem reasonable that they would also need to take, um, responsibility for a higher cost of a
Our additional cost.
Correct, yeah. Paul?
Well, I'll just say, I, I think we have a thoughtful, maybe agonized over recommendation from our fire chief. And I'm in favor of the three chiefs and four captains.
So I'm, I'm like Matt, just hesitant because, but I don't, but I, I like to be consensus, especially when it comes to something as big as this budget. Um, I really want us to be walking in the same direction. So, um, I think you, you've heard, uh, 2472, three chiefs, four captains to be presented to us in May. And, and again, we can, we can ask our, um, neighbors and friends to let us know what you think. And I think, I think we heard at least a penny of, or a penny of fund balance, but
Yeah.
But cutting services is not something we are ready to do yet unless folks tell us that that's what they really want us to do. Because there would not be a substitute for lemon and branch, they'd have to just pay for the service as they need it.
Throw it in the neighbor's lot.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be, they'll be dumping, they'll be dumping all over town. Is that what you do?
We
So you're the one that does that.
Oh, no.
I'll call it very important.
I hope the lots are gone around me. Cliff, Cliff.
Cliff, what else do you need for us to talk about?
Cliff, there's a lot of positive things in here you have in the budget that we presented, you know, in May, that we need to just make sure everybody knows.
Right.
You know, like you're still doing the streets, I mean, you've got a sidewalk project, there's, there's other good stuff in here. Water maintenance, I mean, we're continuing what we're, what we're trying to do that you've said we need to leave in there and you didn't, I don't think you heard any pushback here at all. But that needs to be highlighted.
I'm going to get Chief Limbarketer to come up and sell the four cents.
Why not? You know, I mean, and when, and we were doing the committee meetings every week as, as we were leaning up to this, we talked about, you know, having, uh, residents come to the firehouse and listen to what goes on.
Right.
Okay, and do it in a, do it in the bay there and, uh, do informational sessions so they understand if we can, what, what we're trying to, what we have to do to keep, to keep them safe. So we'll coordinate that somehow.
I just have to say this number one more time, 2.8 billion dollars
Of value
Of value of, um, of commercial and residential real estate, um, that, that our, our fire department and our law enforcement, um, makes it safe for us. So keep that in mind. Anything else you wanted us to talk about, Cliff?
I have another question, just the, the police department budget, is that fully staffed?
That, um
Does it include a, we don't have an assistant, we don't have a
What's in there right now is, is not in there.
What is it?
What is in your budget right, what I've got in front of you, it doesn't include that. A deputy chief salary. The positions there, um, but the, the funding is not at this time.
But it's funded for all patrolmen then?
Yes.
And all other positions?
Yes.
Because we're hoping to get the, our, some potential folks out of BLET and get them on boarded.
Okay.
Sometimes before the end of the sometimes before the end of the calendar year, we hope.
Is, is that due to strategy or due to cuts to make things work for the others?
Some of both.
Well, that really impacts my thinking.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, you gotta have a double thick binder.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, it's gonna be difficult to take the deputy chief position out of the police department and put two chiefs in the fire department, so.
I've, I've, yeah, I can understand that, empathize, and I think from a dollar value of the budget, other than that's in a different department, I think we're still talking five cents potentially, even whether it's assistant chief for fire department or deputy chief for the police department. To me, that's TBD.
Did I hear you say that would be the five cents?
It would still be five cents.
The two, the two positions, the deputy chief and the, or the assistant chief and the deputy, and assistant, assistant police chief and the deputy fire chief. Is that what you're saying?
Three, three fire chiefs, two law enforcement chiefs.
Two law enforcement chiefs.
No, that would be more than five cents.
Would equal more than five cents.
Not quite six cents.
And if.
So if we're.
Oh, yeah, the, the fault, it's, that also changed.
Staying to hiring to make it.
Yeah, we, we could, because hiring the 2448, it was gonna be difficult to get three, that one of those positions was delayed six months in, in the budget, but.
Okay, so that's an additional.
But I think chiefs probably, if anybody's listening, those four positions are filled.
Because of the 2472.
Yeah.
Exactly.
That's what encouraged me to go for, I mean, if they weren't gonna be filled, I have an issue with it, but if they are, if you've got the confidence level, there's people ready to step in.
Yeah.
So that's more to think about.
You have one position in the police department you're not budgeted for.
Currently.
Currently.
A hierarchy position, deputy chief.
Yeah.
When does the police department have their ass?
15 minutes ago.
You didn't get a stage.
Yeah.
I tried.
We're gonna, we're gonna re-huddle.
Okay. Re-huddle, I think we're good, right? Consensus?
I think so.
On the rate. We reached the number.
So can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am, always.
So the things that we just talked about is gonna be more than one penny. So, uh, we talked about increasing five cents, we talked about a penny for the fund balance. I just wanna be clear, if we're putting the money back in for the deputy chief in the police department, it's gonna be well over one cent, it's gonna be closer to two, and if you fully, you know, staff the four captain position, we're gonna be closer to two pennies. Do you all want two pennies out of the fund balance and keep it at four cent tax increase, five cent tax increase? I, I just need to know, so I need to know how to move forward. I was thinking on that maybe Cliff was.
I think.
From my perspective, I'll just tell you by, my threshold that I'm coming to is five cents, and I would like staff to make work those numbers. If, if you reevaluate and say, this year we need a deputy chief police department, we need two chiefs, I mean, that's, that's where I'm gonna defer to your professionalism as a manager.
Yeah, yeah, five cents and fund balance. I, I can do it.
Well, preferably no fund balance, but if it's a paper balance, I, we, we gotta get out of that habit. It's a terrible one. I, I said that last year, but anyway.
Thank you.
I'm speaking for myself, so you all can take me home.
Well, I mean, another way to look at it, though, is, and, so how do you justify to your friends and neighbors that you're raising their taxes, but you're sitting on $2 million of unspent fund balance?
Because I think that some of these stormwater projects, we, we need to embark upon, and the grant funding is almost completely drying up, and we gotta deal with stormwater. And we, we could overtax them and build up, you know, we could build the fund balance again, but right now, I would think we need to keep that siloed for future capital improvements. And that's my personal thought. Again, as a single individual council member.
We just recently discovered there's, there's another fund balance pot of money, which is
I think that.
Somewhere between.
Should be reserved for debt service.
Six something and nine something. I don't know what it's gonna end up being, but.
It's gonna get spent down.
Some of it's definitely gonna get spent down.
Municipal funding, that's not a lot of money.
Yeah, well, that's true.
We'll cover the third chief for a year too.
Okay.
So you're gonna take a look at it and try to come back to that.
Right.
Even what's proposed in here, you would still, the, the new stuff, you would take a look at.
Correct.
Places to save money. I could take a one already.
Looking forward to hearing from my friends and neighbors. Next meeting is May the 6th. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Nice words, man.
Thanks, council.